I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You can't, it may not work though, but go for it.
The word purple?
Yeah. I wouldn't have a vote.
We are.
Alright, so we're all done with this over here.
Need a motion to go into non-public?
Make a motion to go into non-public for RSA 91-832.
I second it.
Second. All in favor?
Johnson aye.
Cole by.
Blood aye.
McCollum aye.
Motion to come out of non-public?
Make a motion to come out of non-public.
I second it.
All in favor?
Johnson aye.
Cole by.
Blood aye.
Can I say no?
You don't want to come out of non-public?
McCollum aye. Nope.
And what, what do you have?
I'd like to amend the non-public RSA. It is 91-832A, the hiring or firing of any...
We got confused with the A that's already in there.
Employee other than a board member.
Alright. Public comment?
Wait, you would be...
Oh wait, we've sealed the non-public minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yep. I'd make a motion to seal the non-public minutes, I believe you said two years, Jerry?
Yes.
Two years.
Or a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Roque call?
Yep, Roque.
Johnson aye.
Cole by.
Blood aye.
McCollum aye.
So just for clarification on that, we take the minutes, they go in an envelope, and they seal, right?
Correct.
And they give them to Larissa.
Give them the date.
When she puts them in the box.
Okay, correct. Public comment? None. Consent agenda. Everyone, make a motion to...
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You?
I haven't looked at it, honestly, because we were having our argument, so can I just abstain?
You can.
I will.
Reports. Superintendent's report.
Hey, issue, you see I have given a report based on my walking two weeks in the position.
What page?
Page fifteen. Probably the big thing I've been, issue fully where the budget's been, I'm thinking, eating up a lion's share of time in the last couple of weeks, but in addition to that, we've spent a fair bit of time looking at what they call HB 1612, which is the state governance plan around data security. I was New Hampshire School Administrators Association meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we'll be in discussions with Main State, who's our current vendor for technology services next week, but just to give you an idea where that's going, I've spoken to a couple of the school districts who are spending a fair bit of money on this thing, you know, I talked to one district that put twenty thousand into a contract just for the writing of the policies and the government governance plan, this didn't include any implementation of that governance plan. Another school district had forty thousand dollars for the same thing, and that may have included some implementation, but just to give you an idea, we do not have that kind of money. It's supposed to be implemented, or the governance plan's supposed to be written by June 30th of this year, and that is not going to happen.
Are there any grants or anything out there that we haven't accessed?
I don't, you know, Anne asked me that same question today, we were talking about it, but it didn't come up, we were in discussion yesterday on it at the legislative meeting, and we had some attorneys who specialize in data security come and talk to us, and that didn't come up, and yeah, I specifically asked that question about, you know, give me an idea what's this going to cost, this law or mandate that's coming down, but hopefully we hear a little more from Main State next Friday and get a better idea.
I hate to make a reference to unfunded mandates, but...
He didn't want me to either. As you see also in bullet number two, there are a couple of House bills that are being proposed currently, and one is HB 677, which deals with the discipline, they talked about bringing the discipline ability of the principal down from ten days down to five, and possibly legislative, you know, concept they call restorative justice, which is a way of dealing with discipline in the building without dealing with suspension, which is really not all that effective, but sometimes it's the only tool we have left on our belt for kids who are so disruptive at school, but trying to find other ways of working with students who are posing some difficulties, as well as there are three bills that are being introduced to address training and education for suicide prevention. One of the bills looks at doing training for two hours for staff at the beginning of the school year, another has, you know, insisted upon training for parents, staff, and students, and one goes with training for staff with also penalty and consequences if that's not done, but those are only in process now in the legislation. Any questions on that? Great idea, you know, we certainly want to address the suicide prevention, it's just the challenge of what's going to be mandated. Department head meetings, we'll be, I'll be meeting with staff next week to go over the different areas where people in charge, we're talking, the school, so Mr. Lampron, Joe for facilities, Brennan for transportation, Marie for finance, and so they're all on the same page in knowing what each department is doing and what the impact might be in a symbiotic kind of relationship, so they, each department has an effect on the others. And just to inform you, we had a professional development day on Monday, the 28th, and teachers in K through three participated in more training with Farnesim Pennell at Leslie University, and teachers grade four through eight and IAs are working on their own curriculums as they reevaluate where they were, and the curriculum really should be a living, breathing document, not something that's, you know, written up, put up on a shelf, and dusted off when we want to take a look at it, but really looking at how the curriculum grows, how we change it, you know, based on what we're doing in the classroom, what might be different with new resources that we have, so again, they were just readjusting their curriculums. Any questions?
Do you, this is not really totally related, but in reference to like the suicide prevention thing, I think it would be a timely thing to talk to the students in an assembly about walking on ice, you know, have that little boy in Dover.
Oh yeah.
And there's a lot of ice in Wakefield, Seven Lakes, and you see people out on it all the time, and you wonder about the kids. You heard about that, Bob, that little boy? So, do you think there could be something in one of the...
Great idea, actually.
Huh?
Great idea.
Probably during lunch, probably just have a discussion, give each individual a group during lunchtime.
Yeah, as long as everybody gets it, you know.
Anything else, Jerry?
Thank you, Jerry.
That'll be it, thank you. Student service report.
So, I reported on Medicaid reimbursement, currently we receive forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. We typically see larger amounts of reimbursements come in in the spring, people are kind of, have to remind them in the fall, don't forget to do your billing, and then we start to get reports from the billing service, MSB, and we know who's not billing, so we get them on track.
Who's not billing, like, the staff?
Yeah, it's just a...
They need to bill.
Right, and that's what, when we find out who's not billing, we let them know, and then they do, and then we see a jump in Medicaid reimbursement, so I feel like we're on track for Medicaid reimbursement for our students with disabilities. The Medicaid expansion legislature that went through that allows us to bill for students that are not students with disabilities but have health-related issues, surprise, surprise, they really haven't figured out how to do that yet. They figured, they put the laws in effect, but it's not really clear, so I'm working with MSB to get that started, because I believe we'll be able to realize a lot more reimbursement as a result of that. We have a lot of kids that are on health plans. I think that's all I talked about in terms of the Medicaid expansion bill, our numbers are staying, we decreased our numbers by eleven pre-K through twelve. I'd have to do like a real dig to find out exactly where we decreased, because we fluctuate so much, but I've asked Amy to look at that with me. We have twenty five oh four plans right now, that all are being monitored by our social worker, it's a lot, five oh four plans for one person, so Jerry and I just today talked about kind of coming up with a five oh four plan around who else can do those plans in the school.
Can you tell me, you know what the five oh four is? Is it the medical?
Five oh four is, I knew, buh, is the American with Disabilities Act.
Okay.
And so, the difference between a five oh four and an IEP is, if a student has an IEP, it's because they require direct specialized instruction.
Okay.
If they only require accommodations and/or modifications, then they wouldn't qualify for an IEP, and that, those are kids that typically we put on five oh fours, so they have health plans, they have depression, anxiety, that kind of stuff, that we still need to put a plan in place to help make sure they're successful, but they don't require specialized instruction, so that's kind of the difference.
And does the IEP, is there a medical aspect to an IEP also?
Sometimes.
Always though, is it a...
Not always.
Okay.
The grant update, Title I carryover has been approved, so we're now providing additional math Tier Two instruction during the school, during the school day, with the Title I teacher that was part-time, she's, we've increased her hours, so she's thirty hours a week through Title I, and her increased hours is for after intervention. And Title Luru, low income grant, I said it was in the final stages of approval, it was approved today.
Oh good.
So, we will be, we will be putting in place a system, a database system that helps us track our disciplinary referrals and keep, help us kind of, it helps drive our decisions about what we do for kids, because it's a good system that isn't something that the assistant principal has made out of an Excel sheet, and then we also have a consultant coming in that will be working with, starting to work with our Tier Two team, but really looking at the overall infrastructure of our school. You've heard it from me, as long as you've known me, we need a good solid tiered intervention for our infrastructure, and I think that this is going to be really helpful.
Good, Sandy.
I have a question, you've been saying that you have problems with some of the staff getting their billing for Medicaid in on time, I know that, what do you have in place for pairs, when can they do it? You know, when they find time to do it, because I know that in the past when I was a pair, that was a problem, trying, because you had to do it during the school day.
So, we did purchase three Chromebooks and one desktop for pairs, they're, it's specific for pairs to use to do their billing, and we, the two delayed openings are days that we ask pairs to use that time to catch up, and...
But during, when we don't have delayed openings, is there a time, I know when I was here, I used to try to take part of my, if I had to go to an IA, that I could take one day a week, part of that time, instead of going to the IA, doing it, is that an option for them as well?
It's not something we've discussed, and it's...
Because I think, I think maybe if they had a...
To be quite frank, the parent professionals are not the people that are delayed in doing their billing, it's usually my related service, contracted service.
And I have another question, I had a constituent ask me why it takes so long to do an IEP evaluation when other school districts seem to do it in a more timely fashion? You know, when, when a kid is identified as maybe having a problem, and there's testing, do we still get it in within the forty-five days?
The law now is for an initial evaluation, we need to have them done within sixty days, and any reevaluations, we need to have done within forty-five days, and we're a hundred percent compliant in that area.
But does it take more, do we, how long, how often do we go to the sixty days, you know?
Only on an initial evaluation, and like I said, we're a hundred percent compliant.
So, the initial, but the initial one takes at least sixty days for a student?
It doesn't always take sixty, but we have optimal sixty days.
But that's about, we've been averaging, okay.
For initial evals.
Yeah.
Two evals are forty-five days.
That's what I was talking, initial eval.
You have to, I mean, one of the things that is extremely hard about, and we all know it because our schedules have been so disruptive by this winter, but you have a snow day, in terms of the special ed law, snow days, delayed openings, early releases, none of that counts, the day that the parent signs that form, it's sixty days that has to be done.
But is it, could it, is sometimes, is it because we don't have enough personnel in place to do it? Okay.
Like I said, we're a hundred percent in compliance for evaluations.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Anne.
I guess I did want to ask, if there's other stuff, other things you want me to report in this report, please let me know what you'd like to hear more of from me. When it, when it comes time for me to write my student service report, I kind of think, okay, what should I write about this month, so if this thing's, I think that it's probably been helpful for me to update you on grants, now that I'm doing grants.
Grants for above-average kids. I said grants for above-average, I haven't seen those.
I told you.
I still haven't seen them.
I'm working on one.
Alright, we'll talk about that. Thank you. Wellness committee, I think.
Okay.
The wellness committee met on January 30th, it was a very brief meeting, they reread policies and everything is up to date, they discussed the slow cooker meals made easy and the forage begins, that food pantry went well, they were held on October 16th, 23th, 30th, November 6th and 13th, they hope to have these programs in the future. Currently, we don't meet the requirements to this for free and reduced hot lunches because we're at forty percent. The Wellness Fair will happen every, every year, the next fair will be in the 2019-2020 school year, they talked about doing a pedometer walking challenge for Paul's School Walks, which will take place after, after April break, and the goal is twelve thousand, six hundred steps, and Anne Kebler will see about the Deltson staff participating, and Mark Perkins will see how many total steps up Mount Washington it takes. The next meeting is tentatively scheduled for April, in April.
I think the Anne Kebler part of that is, they've asked me to look for a grant that we purchase from...
Okay, they didn't have that in their, in the minutes.
Yeah, the pedometers, I can, I can, the grants that I'm aware of, I can, I can see myself maybe getting grants for pedometers for students, but I'm not sure I can get a grant that would allow us to purchase pedometers for teachers, I don't know.
But most of them have them on their cellphones?
Right, right.
Don't most of the kids have them on their cellphones?
Probably, that is what Jeff, after that meeting, Jeff asked me if I could look at grants, see if I could find a grant for that.
Jerry, is this, is this the plan of doing at recess, or?
I do not, I was not at that meeting, so I do not know what their intention is.
Okay, and because there are other ways of doing that, you know, measuring steps, and you know, how they end up, you know, determining how far people go, I mean, if it's done at a time during school.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sandy. They have school board, board update.
MSB again, on Saturday, January 26th, I attended the NHSBA Delegate Assembly in Concord. The morning session consisted of two presentations, one was the Shaker Regional School Board, which got the 2018 School Board of the Year Award. Highlights of their presentation included the use of a UNH survey center to develop a cultural survey, it addressed culture and climate issues, surveys were getting out to teachers, staff, parents, and students, it was taken online, and after the UNH tabulates the results, and they have a community meeting on the results. They use a superintendent evaluation tool, which is filled out by the school board members and administrations, this is all done anonymously, the superintendent also fills out one. The survey questions are centered around leadership versus managerial aspects of the superintendent. They also have the board and the superintendent meet every two to three months to evaluate how each is doing, and this is done in a non-public session. The second presentation was social and emotional learning presentation by the Merrimack School Board and the Director of Student Services of the Merrimack School District, in conjunction with Assistant Principal Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. They cited the website, www.aestudy.org, and that, it stated there was a correlation between academics and mental health issues, they have a district assessment tool, it's a self-evaluation to determine how you are addressing the mental health, social, and emotional needs of the district, engineering fact of an app was that New Hampshire is rated thirty-eighth in the nation for access to mental health care. The presentation also included a three-tier approach to implementation of program and possible budget implications. The afternoon session consisted of the business meeting with approval agenda of the minutes of the 2018 Delegate Assembly, a president's report was given, nominating committee report, treasurer's report, and executive report, then the delegate assembly discussed the new proposed and continuing resolutions, the two resolutions on gun control by local districts did not pass.
Okay. Any questions?
It passed that...
Larissa, do you need a copy of that?
I've got a copy.
No, she's going to watch the Blue Channel, aren't you?
Alright. Full business? Sprinkler update?
So, Joe had a quote from Superior Fire Protection replaced the piping.
It was a district, they got it, they got it.
They got that?
Yeah.
So, you've got that handout, which came in much better than we thought, we were expecting a little above twenty thousand, and it came in at twelve, almost twelve, seven, seventy-five and thirty-three cents. Your school policy requires that you go out to bid, but you are allowed to supersede your own policy. If we superseded the policy and went with Superior, we could get this done, or February Vacation, when the building is vacant. Also, of note, Superior Fire Protection bid out the last, when we did the elementary end, and they were a little bitter.
What's actually going to be replaced here, the whole thing?
The, the horizontal main piping, and possibly, possibly other parts for the, up there, but it really comes off that main four-inch piping.
So, the one that was done a few years ago, they're not redoing that?
No, no, that's fine, that, that was that part, that was that Schedule 22, I believe, it was, and we ended up with Schedule 40 is what's planned for the new section.
Jeff?
How long does it take to get other people in here to estimate, and, I mean, could we get anybody in here quickly, just so that we can be sure that we are saving taxpayer dollars?
I'll defer to Marie on that, on the RFP process.
It takes a couple of weeks to actually put the RFP together, to put it out there, and then...
Can we do some phone call quotes?
Well, well, RFP is different than, than three, than three members.
Yeah.
So, if you do the RFP process, it takes time to develop it, and then, most of the time when you do RFP, you request that they give the correct dollar amount to actually come in and do a mandatory walkthrough.
Yep.
So, that could take a while, because then people that come in have, are entitled to questions, and then they get replied back, so this is going to go way past February vacation.
Well, can we just, what's the difference between, what's our rule that we would supersede? Is it that, can we just call or put it out there real quickly to a handful of people and say, come now and do this, because we'd want it to happen during February Vacation, while the kids are not here, and the staff are not here, I mean, can't we just hustle it?
Jeff? I'm ready, Tracy.
The fire, we're not, we're not under, we need the sprinkler to work, I mean, we're not in code right now, so it's more of a...
The sprinkler works if, if the continued, we may find that we have more damage from leaks, and things of that nature.
This is different for me because it is a safety factor for the students, which makes it not just replacing a wall, or replacing a carpet, or replacing paint, this is actually, you know, a fire safety issue for the students, and we need to have it done when the kids are not in the building, which leaves us with another constraint.
And I believe with the staff, that's an issue too, right? Isn't there a legal issue?
We're concerned, you know, the pipe is quite heavy, if it were to, if you were to go up there, you'll find that the insulation is open, so there's only certain areas that are covered with OSB or some kind of plywood, so what you have is, right above your ceiling, you have, you know, your subflooring, but, the ceiling piece, but there's nothing that would protect the pipe from the pipe, the pipe would hit the floor, it would be dropped, it could come through the ceiling, and if somebody were in the room, they could be seriously injured, this is cast iron pipe.
Sandy?
And if I'm not mistaken, if we do an RFP, that comes back to the board for approval before it goes out, so that's even puts it further...
But does it have to be an RFP? Can we not call three or four local...
That's the board's decision.
...fire protection places and ask them to come in quickly?
Well, if you, we're going to be a date set for that, when's...
Well, that's the point, that's the point, is it would have to be quickly.
When's the February vacation?
Well, if, February vacation, yeah, in three weeks, two and a half weeks, so before, I'd still have to come back to you at the next board meeting, and if we wanted this thunder in February, you would have to let them know now.
Schedule it.
Yeah, put them to schedule that piece.
If it breaks even further, and we had to actually close school, it would add enormous expense to the school and the district.
And happiness to all the kids.
I don't believe it's going to, it's not the compressor that's failing, but these are the pipes that are leaking, so we will still end up with more leaking, I don't see as an issue with the fire suppression systems failing, that's not how it's been portrayed to me, it's more, as Joe pointed out, you know, you can feel along the pipe where it's smooth, and then some spots where it's rough, where it's starting to rust through, and so it's not, again, it's not a matter, I don't think it's going to fail tomorrow, nor do I think we're going to have an issue with the sprinkler, that was the issue with the compressor, which we're taking care of, this right here is just, if you wait, you're going to probably have to wait until April Vacation to get this repaired, but we may, still may have some more damage from the leaking pipes.
In the...
Excuse me.
No, I was just going to...
So, typically, we have three, goes out to bed, so I guess, are we under the gun to do this right now? Can we wait for the April Vacation? Do we want to wait?
No, I don't think so.
I would like you to get it done now, and I think, you know, again, talking with Joe, we're pretty confident that they're going to end up being a little better than they were before on this.
And their previous project was very successful?
Correct.
What do you guys like to do?
I'd like to get the fire protection.
I have a question for Marie, is there money in the maintenance budget, for some of it?
Oh, this has to be done anyway.
The facilities manager indicated at the last school board meeting that there is not.
Pardon me?
The facilities manager at the last school board meeting indicated that this is over and beyond what was budgeted.
Okay.
And at the time, he thought it was going to be more money than this.
Double that, yep.
With those, exactly.
So, do we have a trust fund that we could, that could come out of?
An emergency repair?
Well, there is no contingency at this point in time. We'd have to have a public meeting to, if there were, let me try to see if I have the trust fund, building repairs, I don't know if that would be considered building repair. We have a...
Why wouldn't it?
We had, so, we had, the district had a repair and replace of sprinkler system that was closed out after that project was completed, so that trust fund no longer exists, used that, whatever was remaining to reduce the tax, to return back to...
Paid it back to the town.
Yes.
I remember.
So, the only other one that we have is school asbestos abatement and rural renovations, I don't know if this is applicable to that, that's the only other one that looks like it may, and then the...
Remember we asked for twenty, and then it got reduced to ten?
That's a, you mean the current one?
The contingency.
That's for next year.
I know that, but is there anything in it, but it isn't existing?
No, it's created one.
They created one. I mean, kids need a sprinkler system, so...
This is, this is not, I don't think it's negotiable, quite honestly, it's a matter of cost of doing business that, you are going to have further damage, we will have further damage, we have leaking now, it's not going to get better from year on out.
For safety reasons, I'd rather do it sooner than later, for the safety of the school.
Okay, wait, anybody want to make a motion on this?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we supersede the policy due to, for the sprinkler system repaired due to the safety of the school.
I second it.
And accept this quote?
And accept the quote of twelve thousand, from Superior for twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Do I second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did we have a choice?
No.
School calendar review, last page.
Last page, so you have the Rochester calendar in front of you, we'll be redoing the calendar, I had asked for a staff to have input by today, some of the major piece of input is to bring back the four days in August, before school starts, so that for us would be the 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th. As you can look at the, you look there, the 30th is the Friday, and I believe there's something in the new CBA regarding Labor Day.
I think the, before Labor Day, there are two teacher workshops days, right? Is that what came up with?
Well, we're looking at four. No, we're looking at four now.
But a minimum of, and there were no kids, right?
Right, and so you're looking at, starting on Monday, the 26th, and Friday before Labor Day, I believe that's contractually obligated now to not have school before that, not have school that day.
Not have kids in school that day.
Okay.
Teachers can be there.
Okay. So I'm not, I'm just kinda giving you an idea of where we're at. This is not the calendar right now.
Is this Rochester's, though? They have 20th, 29th, and 30th?
They have, with kids, yes. The other proposal was, and I'm waiting for some feedback, we'll be talking with the staff tomorrow. The union will be talking with them regarding what their thoughts are around delayed opening days as opposed to early release days, as well as looking at adjusting the days in which we have the parent conferences, where currently, we would normally have the parent conferences the 25th and the 26th of November, but report cards come out somewhere around, at this point, I think it would be coming somewhere around the first full week in November, which is, you're getting the report cards, but then it's two weeks later, almost three, almost three weeks later than, that you're having, well, it is three weeks later that you're having the parent conferences here. You're not having this proximity of time.
They always felt really late anyway.
It does.
They really do, as for a parent. It's just like, you're way too into it.
Right. So what's gonna, you know, what the complaint from parents will be at that point is that, I think they depend on those, that time. Some people decide to get their parent conference done the week before, and they may take off and go somewhere, you know, Thanksgiving. So that's what I'm waiting to hear back from the staff. They're having the staff meet tomorrow, they'll discuss that there.
It's too bad you couldn't squeeze it in, you know how you have two half-days? You couldn't squeeze it into a whole day, because half-days are a pain. It just are.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
I'll be back with you at our next meeting.
Miki toki.
For the calendar.
Deliberative session review.
Just put that in there if we need to have further discussion. I know you have the warrant article seven, that was adjusted in the deliberative session. Those numbers, the numbers were changed to accommodate the addition of the health position. You need, you need to vote on that. Again, we had a school board vote for Article Seven as it sat prior to the deliberative session. Now you have a new number, and so you need to vote on that.
Anyone?
Sure, you wanna make the motion?
Sure.
I think somebody needs to read the-
Yeah, I was gonna do it. Go ahead.
Jeff?
Okay, Article Seven, shall the Wakefield School District vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session? For the purposes set forth therein totaling $10,605,989, should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $10,277,595, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Wakefield School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40, 13, 10, and 16 to take up to the issue of a revised operating budget only. Note, warrant article seven, operating budget does not include appropriations and any other warrant article. The total operating budget will be offset by the estimated federal grant revenues of $290,000 and an estimated $188,000 in local, state, and federal child nutrition revenue, leaving a net budget of $10,127,989. The amount of $478,000 will not be raised by taxes.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. So when the health program was approved to go forward and to add to the budget that was previously worked for, because the program was in existence in the current year, '19, it then got added back as the '19 budget, so it also got included in the default.
Thanks.
Because it's taking the current numbers, as the attorney said, and then moving it over. When it was, when the program was eliminated, when a program is eliminated or staff is eliminated, you cannot carry that over into the default, because it's the same, it was restored back to where it is today. It is also included, so that additional $81,999 was included in the operating budget and also added to the default.
Marie, can I have a second for discussion?
So we have a motion on the floor?
So we need a second and discussion.
You have made the motion?
I made the motion, too, for Article Seven.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
For discussion?
I just wanna say, for anybody who's listening, that at the deliberative session, the voters asked to return the health teacher to the budget and-
The health?
The health, not the program.
Right.
Right, I'm sorry, the health program. The voters asked to return the health teacher to, program, I'm sorry, the health program to the budget, and the voters voted on it to pass and add it, add it back into the school budget, and we're here tonight to do a school vote, school board vote.
Go ahead.
So do we have a hall of favor?
We need a vote on this, right?
Right.
So motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I got confused.
Me, too.
Oh, you have, you have other business, I just-
Oh, you don't have a word?
No, you just came up today, so thank you, sorry. So other business, you have the school district report, which will be printed up and distributed prior to the March election. And I just have one question. You have, the superintendent of schools is listed, so it, it said, the office, here's the way it reads, Office of the Wakefield School District has a school board, superintendent of schools for 2018, 2019. That was Dr. Tyree. Do you wanna continue having it there on there? Or would you like to put, leave it blank? Would you like to put me in as the interim? But this is, the district report really addresses last year. How would you like that to read?
That's appropriate. Marie, do you know, have you seen it?
Sorry, I can't help you on that.
Ian?
I know that in writing the student service, the annual student service report, I'm always reminded that it is for the previous year, so I think it makes sense that the previous year probably is the report that you're getting.
So we'll leave it in?
Should we put in maybe?
He just finds the way it is.
Okay.
It is the last year.
Since it was Superintendent Tyree who wrote the report, her name should be on it. That's the way I feel.
All right, excellent.
If that happens, that is all I have.
Public comment? Priscilla?
Yeah, I find it odd that the health teachers' salary and the health teachers' program is exactly $81,999. How do you decide what that health program costs? How did you determine the cost of the health program? Are you asking me?
Yeah, can you answer that?
I mean, you're all looking at me, so.
I mean, I have an answer, but I don't know that it's the one we wanna use.
When the school board was looking at making reductions to the budget, one of the things they recommended or decided to was to eliminate the health program, program. And with the program, there's a, there's a staff member associated with it. So at the time, the directive was to take the health program and eliminate that program, so the dollars that were associated to that program was reduced.
The total dollars.
The total dollars associated with that program was reduced.
Can we put it back in?
And that was the number?
That was the number.
So.
And it was, yes, and it was attached, program's attached to a staff member that provides, that provides that program.
So?
Actually, the five board members went into a non-public without having anybody, they had no administration, came out of a non-public, and you said you ripped the position, not a program. It was two weeks later when you changed it to a program.
Something that Chris did.
So I still find how that 81,999 would be exactly the price of a program.
We'll make sure it fits right in there.
It's what we took out, it's what we put back in.
I understand that. That's exactly. I wondered what the tax impact is for your budget. It's four cents for the town. What is it for the school?
Did you know that?
I do, I mean, I do. It was said at deliberative session. Is there a reason that you're-
No, I didn't hear it.
You were on the budget committee.
I know, but I didn't know it was.
It's on the minutes.
Do you know the answer? Share it with me, because I don't know the answer.
Okay. The, this, well, it was $871,000 that we, the default budget is $600,000. So the default budget, no matter what anybody votes, the default budget will go through, and it will cover special ed, and it will cover tuition. There is no increase whatsoever for regular ed in the default budget, and only is allowed to cover increases in two areas. This board increased the 605 to 871, which is approximately $270,000 to, for special ed and for maintenance of the building. So $605 is approximately, will raise the budget approximately 50, per $100,000, about $59. The additional is 27 for a total of, what did we say, Marie? $70? So we-
69, is that the 69 that you were saying?
The $69, it increases at $69, well, actually, $79, because it's about $60 without the additional regular ed. So it will probably cost, it will cost $70 for the school board budget for a $100,000 house for the year. It's approximately $20 more per year for a $100,000 house than the default budget. It's about two boxes of pizza.
Does that include warrant articles?
Nope, Priscilla, it does not include the warrant articles.
The tax impact-
Hold on a second, I'll finish up the warrant article discussion. Last year, the school board has only requested $160,000 when the town requested $700,000. The year before that, the school requested $335,000. Again, the town requested close to, somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000. Going forward, they're also asking for between $600,000 and $700,000. The school has-
She's answering the question.
The school has got behind. It got behind considerably. We have 35-year-old furnaces, we have leaky sprinkler systems, we have windows that leak with asbestos that can't open. So we participated in a CIB. We are overcrowded. We're turning our activity room into a instructional space, and we created a CIP, trying to let the CIP committee know that we are overcrowded. And we pretty much put our CIP into the warrant articles. This year, what was chosen was the 10-year-old buses, three 10-year-old transportation vehicles with 250,000 miles we have to bring up to date, and the windows were $200,000. We're starting for a $350,000 quote to bring the windows, the leaky windows, up to date. There's miscellaneous security, technology, room renovation, a room renovation for instructional, so we can create cubbies for our special ed program. I would say that total adds up to approximately $900,000. It includes the short fall that, there wasn't enough money budgeted for this year's budget in high school tuition or special ed. So that's approximately $90 per $100,000 household, probably closer to 85, to bring, to start to bring the school up to date. And that is our job as a board to tell the town what is wrong with the school. We can't keep it to ourselves, we can't not let you know that the building is aging and that you don't, you, the furnaces that could break, and then we'd have to shut school down. If we don't let you know the condition of the school, who else will tell you?
Chrissy, I sat in that chair for five years. I know what you're talking about, I'm on the budget committee. I know everything you said.
I thought you didn't understand me.
Tracy, good job.
The tax that's from the town, including warrant articles, is four cents. What is it for?
The town receipt has a general fund.
All I wanna know is what the tax-
Okay, I've already told you, it was, I said approximately $80 for the warrant articles, and you are going to go up, without us doing a thing, approximately $60 for a default budget and $80 for a, the school budget. So the warrant articles are 90, it's gonna be 150 or 180, 170, 150 or 169 if everything goes through. Again, you, if you vote a default budget, you don't vote anything for regular education, and if you don't fix the things that are wrong in the school, we, you know, eventually we're gonna have to fix it at some point. So, I mean, right now, the sprinklers just started leaking. It wasn't in the budget either, so. I don't know what you think we're doing wrong, Priscilla, but obviously you do, so.
Obviously, I don't know.
I mean, if you wanna be more specific, that's fine.
I just wanted to simple say-
Did that answer the question?
No, it doesn't. It absolutely does not. I know everything you're saying, I agree with most everything you're saying. In fact, I agree with everything you're saying. It's all, it's all very true. But I just wanna know, the tax impact for the town, including their warrant articles, is four cents. What is that number?
Okay, the war, you know, I have no idea how the numbers come up for four cents.
Did you answer that question?
I did, but I'm gonna go back a little bit further, because the town gets, has a, has a general fund, that tax money that has come into the town sometimes doesn't, and you don't spend it, they don't always give it back to the taxpayers. They get to put it in the general fund. They have a general fund. The general fund is money that came from taxpayers.
Chrissy, you haven't told me anything.
So, but it offsets, it may offset, you can use that money. We don't have, everything we don't use goes back. So to keep saying there are four cents, when the town went up 10%, 10.24 last year, 8-point-something this year, and you get to offset it with income from car registration and permitting, and we don't have that at the school. And it's, you're not comparing apples to apples.
Bob, can I call the SAU tomorrow and get that number?
Do you have that number?
I just, wait, hold on. It is, I've already said it to you, it's-
Between and between. I just wanna know, if everything passes the warrant articles and the school budget-
$85 for the warrant article and $79, $79 for the school budget.
So it's 159, and it's per thousand, so divide by 1,000, and that'll give you the number, right? So if you do 159 divided by 1,000, I should-
It's $1.50.
It's 15.9.
Well, per thousand.
We're talking four cents.
For a dollar, well, per four. For a thousand, it's $1.50.
Is it $1.64, is that what you said?
$1.69.
$1.69.
$1.69?
That's what was estimated.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's it?
Thank you.
Do you have any else?
No, sir.
Post it to adjourn?
Yeah, post it to adjourn.
Second?
Second!
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.